It is 9:00 a.m. I'm going to call the Stearns County Board of Commissioners. In order, let the record reflect that we are all present with Commissioner Lenzmeyer noticed remotely, so he is participating remotely. And would ask everyone to stand and join us for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And since this is our closest one to the Fourth of July, a little reflection on what it means to be American.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item of business is approving the agenda. I know there's one item that has changed. Dr. Williams, would you let the board and the public know what's changed?
Madam Chair, yes. On the consent agenda, item 12, E12, requesting that the board not take action on that. We'll pull it from the agenda for some further evaluation.
Great. Okay. So members, E12 is pulled from the agenda. If there's no other changes, looking for a motion to approve the agenda with that modification.
Madam Chair, I just want to make two comments.
Wait, we're not to consent yet. We're just the broader agenda.
Let me move the broader agenda.
Great. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. See no further discussion. We'll go ahead and do the round first and then you, Lee. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lee. Oppose, same sign. Okay, the agenda is approved. Now we're going to move to the consent agenda. E12 is no longer on the agenda. Does anybody have anything they want pulled? I'm hearing Commissioner Bertram, you've got a couple of comments you wanted to make. Does anybody have any items they want pulled?
I won't, Madam Chair, I won't pull the items. But on E3, the appeals, Chad and I talked and Jake, I sent an email. I'd like to have a little bit more detail on that and they're going to give that, the board wants that, can share it with you as well. And then the minutes on the Justice Center, I really would appreciate more detail who's ever doing those when we have those meetings. It was pretty barren. There wasn't a lot of detail.
Is that from the work session?
Yes.
There's not usually much there, but yes, they could use a bit more information.
Only because as we move forward, I mean, obviously detail and then having historical data will be important, but I didn't think the minutes quite met what we might need long-term. So just for whatever it's worth, I think we should approve them, obviously, but when we do have those work sessions.
Right. So in general, a work session might have a brief description about it and then if we take any action, and because we did take some action, it would certainly be appropriate for the public to be able to see a bit more information there.
That's just for whatever it's worth. I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay. Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Notch. See no further discussion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. The items in the consent agenda are approved. I think those were both good comments and chat as usual. When you get that information, you'll send it to the board. All right. So our next item is parks. Ben, and I know we have some guests here. Consideration of the adopting the Parks and Trails Legacy Grant Resolution and authorizing park staff in the Mid-Minnesota Cycling Club to pursue funds to construct up to 10 miles of single-track mountain bike trails at Quarry Park. Welcome. If each of you could go ahead and say your name for the record, that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Ben Anderson, Parks Director, Stearns County.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name's Irene Wilcox. I'm the treasurer for Mid-Minnesota Cycling Club.
John Kern, I'm the former president of the Mid-Minnesota Cycling Club.
Great.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Just some brief history. So just to recall, in 2020 is when we entered into an agreement with the Mid-Minnesota Cycling Club to develop, maintain, and operate mountain bike trails out at Quarry Park. So over the last several years, we've been working with the club back and forth to try and bring this to a reality in the park. And the Mid-Minnesota Cycling Club has an update with a PowerPoint that they're going to run through here.
Great.
So just briefly, Mid-Minnesota Cycling Club really started grassroots, a nonprofit. 2002 kind of formed a bunch of friends who liked to mount bike. We were really created to really to work with the state, the government's relationship with the colony, really to get access to trails. This formed as a nonprofit in, what, 2019? We founded a high school cycling club, we have a Mud Puppies Club, and we approached the county for access to create its trail system at Quarry Park, and which kind of led us to our history to get here. Our goal is for 10 miles of professionally-built trail in the Quarry Park system. Professionally-built really means that machines coming in there, moving the, doing the groundwork, really to, instead of being old pick and ax type of work where our current trails are around town, this is a professionally-built trail, meaning there's professionals out there that are hired, bringing equipment to break about a three-foot-wide base. So five miles of this, really unique for this trail system is an all-weather trail. That is unique for mountain bike trails in Minnesota. We have them in Duluth, we have them up in the Cayuna Park system, but really what that means is we get rain coming in, within a half hour, those systems are built to be water, to have good water runoff, a great base, and for a long-term, easy maintenance also. It's a lot more, long-term is a lot more better on the environment when you have a trail system that doesn't have the washouts of the old trail systems. The other goals, make it really a family-friendly trail. A lot of the old-school trails are really built in with root systems, and for beginners, they're very tough riders. When the machine-built, it really gives access to most beginners, the intermediate, and the experts. Quarry Park already has tons of property out there that's really access anywhere for mountain biking, but what they'll still really do is define where mountain biking is really laid up for those trail systems versus riders showing up there, not really looking at their maps and kind of riding anywhere. This will be a uniformed trail system that they'll know where to ride.
And so we are applying for a state legacy grant. The total project cost for this 10 miles is estimated to be around $800,000. We have been tasked to collect 25% of that, which would be $200,000, and we'll go through those numbers later. And then the grant would give us the rest of that, around $600,000.
So the, right, currently, we talked about the machine and trail. In this, in Stearns Colony, there isn't much of this trail. It just really doesn't exist. That's why we, this is essentially a mountain bike desert. We currently do have nine miles of trail, a lot of it's been torn up right now with a project in Sault Ste. Cloud, but we will get it back someday. But this will really enhance our trail system. So, I mean, mountain biking, it's, I mean, every kid loves to get on their bike and ride. And, I mean, Sault Ste. Cloud is unique. We do have the BMX track, we do have the Mud Puppies, we do have the high school team, but really, it's the trail, purely the number of miles of trails is what we're short of. And this trail system is just, it's going to expand and give more access. I mean, it's been really shown that for tourism and events, I mean, we've had the opportunity to hold some events in the North Loop Trail up at the prison. When we hold these events, the high school cycling races, we're getting 3,000 people coming to town. There's 3,000 racers, plus their families, coming into town. This will give us access to get that, particularly with the all-weather trail, to get those things, get those races back here, along with, there's a series in Minnesota we're hoping to bring back to town also, that we haven't been able to get because of the competing trails that are out there. This will give us the trail system that they'll be attracted to. It's been really shown for local businesses. These people come to town, I mean, mountain bike families spend money. They're getting hotels, they're going to restaurants. And not only will it be for these events, but it's going to be a trail destination that people are going to want to come to with this trail system is going to create. And of course, quality of life. When you can start kids on their bikes young, they can enjoy that, and ride through high school opportunities, and this kind of, it's a quality of life, both for what businesses can show that they have access in their backyards, along with the local residents, along with people bringing it in town.
So just a little bit of information about what we've done this past year to get this going. This campaign, we started a subcommittee in December of last year, 2023, and this group of people decided that we kind of needed some outside help. So we did hire a consultant, Kalen Enterprises, which is a group out of Boulder that has worked on trail systems in northern Minnesota, such as in Cayuna, Ironton, as well as up north, Chisholm, Redhead, as well as other trail systems around the nation. So they kind of helped with our marketing, as well as kind of guided us on. We really started the campaign this March. We had an event at Beaver Island Brewing to kick everything off, and we've had a very intense marketing campaign with emails, social media, our website, as well as numerous in-person meetings with individuals and companies around town. Just a really quick overview of our donors. We have three donor levels. We have a green, which is under $1,000, blue, which is $1,000 to under $10,000, and then black donor level, which is over $10,000, which is similar to the expertise levels on a mountain bike trail. So just really quickly, we have around 27 individual donors or private donors here, some of those. We have seven businesses that are, have donated or committed to donating, and we have three different nonprofits or foundations that have also committed or donated so far. There's kind of an overview. So then, here's kind of maybe some numbers that you'd like to see so far. And again, we are trying to apply for this grant, and the deadline for right now is July 31st. We are continuing to fundraise and will continue to fundraise after that time. But right now, we have $30,000 in cash donations. And then, if you look kind of on the top right, we have commitments. And so this grant does allow us to have letters of commitments where businesses and individuals can, you know, sign off that they will be giving this money by the end of 2024 or 2025. So if you look in cash, by the end of this year, we'll get $25,000, and by the end of 2025, $49,000. We've also had materials committed, so Lumber One and Knife River have committed to giving lumber for creating bridges and other features, as well as Knife River has committed to giving, like, materials like granite and soil that would be needed for the trails. And then we also have some businesses and individuals that are even willing to give beyond 2025, and so that's all the way in the top left. So when it comes to what we have towards our 25% match or our $200,000 goal, currently we have $104,541. So those are the three numbers in yellow, which are considered for that grant total. We are, we did have a conversation with Burnix. Burnix is also committing $20,000, so really, we're at 124. We just haven't gotten the paperwork back for that yet. When we add in those materials that have been committed, we've got a total of $124,000. And then, when we look beyond 2025, the commitments, $139,000. And again, once Burnix comes in, all of those numbers will be an additional $20,000. And this isn't the end. We are continuing to fundraise. So just an example of that is John and I will be going to the Wake Park City Council meeting this month and presenting to them and asking for their support. We've also, myself and another Mid-Minnesota Cycling member, board member, have been interviewed for a St. Cloud Live article. So we have some other media that's happening that hopefully will spread the word, and we're hoping to get that, to bring in more donors and commitments. So with that, that's kind of a lot of information. We'll take any questions that you have about these numbers or the project, otherwise.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, anything you want to add before we go to questions or comments?
I would just add that the Park Commission did have extensive conversation multiple times over the last several months on this, and at their last meeting, they did unanimously support the recommended action that is in your packet today, so.
Joe, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah. And as Ben had mentioned, there was considerable amount of discussion about it, and I don't know if we would, the couple of the, the main issues were the dynamics of the park, which would be, what putting the trails would be, would be the impact of that. And the other one was, the concern was raising the $200,000, because that was what was committed. And the, should the county pick up the rest, which is our proposal, and should there be an obligation to pay that back? So all of you folks.
Yeah, and I think that's certainly a question that I had. I got a chance to talk with you, Ben, a little bit, but if you could talk about that. It sounds like you're committed to going. And then perhaps about the trails too, given how robustly the trails are used, if you could help us better understand, or the public, probably that's more important, what you're considering and how that would play out.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So the overall design and location of the trails is, we have a general idea in our heads. The Mid-Minnesota Cycling Club is, has a general layout, but the final design of that won't occur until we get an engineer on board to help us look at those. And we certainly recognize that swimming is our major draw in the summertime, and there's two major trails that go down to both of those swimming quarries. So, you know, avoiding those areas or having the least impact on those areas during those busy times is something that we are certainly keeping in the, in the back of our heads, because it is a swimming destination, being one of the top swimming holes in the country, you know, that we found out a few years ago. Also, you know, I do want to say, I think that the, this trail system is really meant to not take over what Quarry Park is about, but it's to complement what is existing there. We have the Ledge Amphitheater right next door. We found out that they actually bring artists over to the park currently and existing. We've got people calling, asking Quarry, asking about Quarry Park, because they're coming up for different shows and things. So what can we do in the park? Can we go fishing? Where can we fish? Where do we go swimming? How do we access the park? Things like that. I think this just adds another layer to that area that's kind of developing out there around the edge for those recreational opportunities to keep bringing people into town. But certainly that park usage, we don't want to lose what Quarry Park is about, we just want to enhance and maintain. And I really think this usership from this mountain bike, I don't, there'll be some people that'll be out there riding when it's 90 degrees, but I think it's going to be more complementary in the spring and in the fall, when things cool off, where we don't see as big a numbers out at Quarry Park, which may increase some of our parking revenue in the future as well.
Commissioner Notch.
Thanks. The question I had was, when you were discussing the competitions, is there going to be a parking issue, or is there going to be a separation there? I mean, if you have competition, you know, obviously if they take up Quarry Park's parking lot, where does the general public go?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, so we are ready, not to the form of 3,000, that might be a stretch, but all these events are going to be vetted by the Parks Department to see what we can and can't handle, and most likely the Park Commission. But we do work with the YMCA currently to do the end-of-summer fun run, where we, they accommodate up to 1,600 people that run through the park. And they do off-site parking for things like that, where they can park at Discovery, or we work with the city of Wake Park to utilize their parking facilities, use buses to bring people in, different things like that. So we've sort of dabbled in that a little bit, but yeah, certainly something we need to be considered of.
Good question. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I can't see you. Do you have comments or questions?
No, I think I've been keeping up on this primarily with phone calls, so I think they covered the topic appropriately. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bertram?
Not right now.
Okay. And it sounds like the request from going forward with the grant is similar to what we recently did with the Haynesville area property, right? Where we've got local folks that are working to fundraise with the board, potentially doing some gap funding if the fundraising doesn't get all the way there. It's good to hear about Burnix, that's exciting, makes sense too. But that's, that's something we're always looking at, right? Like, how are we helping spread the commitment and the dollars? And Commissioner Lenzmeyer personally was asking you, because you've been a champion of public-private partnerships on these, so it's really good to hear you coming forward. And as we've looked at more opportunities, particularly for young adults or teenagers, this is something I've certainly heard about, looking for some more additional options. Not to say all of us couldn't participate as well.
One other concern, I guess, would be trail maintenance, is that if we're going to have 10 miles of trail, the responsibility and the cost of the trail maintenance.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, so if you remember, in 2020, we did enter into that license use agreement, and in that, that does put the majority of that responsibility on the Mid-Minnesota Cycling Club for that. And we see similar situations like that where it works in Wright County, for instance, at their Bertram Trail Lakes County Park. Mork is the organization that takes care of those trails, and Wright County's had an excellent relationship with that. And I don't know.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. That is part of our, our mission as a cycling club, and you'll see that with different cycling organizations across the country. It's, it's not just about riding, it's about stewardship. So as we have members and we have young people that are joining our sport, it is about taking care of our trails, and taking care of the land that we use, and being respectful to that. So we are 100% committed to maintaining the trails.
Madam Chair, I'll just add, there are certain times when the county will come in and assist with, like, large trees where chainsaw work and stuff like that within there, where we will come in and then we'll handle that, but most of the small stuff that can be done with, like, handsaws and things like that is what's been.
Thank you, that's helpful.
The agreement.
Commissioner Bertram?
Madam Chair, I wanted everybody to say what they wanted to say, I guess. I wasn't here in 2020, so this is new to me, and it kind of popped up quickly for me. But certainly sounds like you've done a lot, and it's great. I was involved with building a trail around Lake Cronus, and so I know firsthand on that. And then, of course, the park that we're hoping to get in Haynesville, what, I'll just want to be honest with you, the concern I have is, I came to the table and said that I'll raise 150,000 for the park, well, that's in the bank. I mean, that's not literally cut there, but it's committed. This is a little different. I know the legacy grant application is due, and that's why you have to move. The money's not raised, and that's a little, you know, dicey for me. And plus, we've got Cold Spring going on, we might have Haynesville going on, the Recore Trail, hopes, like everything with the Lake Cronus Recreational Trail, that we can help get that seven miles done on the Glacial Lakes Trail, even though we're not going to do that, we want to help make that happen. Steve's got the Dairyland Trail that he'd love to make happen. Zig Ziglar said, always said, "Do what you do well and do a lot of it." He didn't say it, but right after that, he could have said, "And don't do too much of it." So that's my concern. I don't know what to say other than that, but, and like I said, this has kind of hit me fast with a holiday weekend. Normally, I try to look at everything on Thursday or Friday, which I didn't, but as I was finally reviewing everything last night at 10 o'clock, I kind of reread this, and I thought, okay, those are just some of my concerns, and I let Ben know that that's what I had.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think that's something where we all balance over time, and this is something that's been in process for a while. I think some of what you've raised, I'll just speak for myself, are things that I consider and get concerned with at times. This has been part of our plan. And I think if it wasn't, a good thing is, we're really talking about a trail if we get the grant, because that's the if. There is time to finish the fundraiser between now and, it really won't be until, what, 2026?
Yeah. Madam Chair, yeah, more than likely by the time, if the grant is awarded, we won't know that until the end of session, legislative session next year. By the time we get through the environmental paperwork, that probably won't be until next winter. So yeah, we're really looking at a 2026, 2027 construction timeframe, which then does give a couple more, well, quite a few more years to close that gap on the 200,000.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, speaking for myself, the anticipation would be that the funds would, would all be raised, right? As you're, as you're attempting to do that, and perhaps getting some updates via email or some other way about where that fundraising is going, is, as well, would be, I think, important. In part for your donors to know too, that we, we're looking this as truly as a partnership, and that we do have a number of other, other needs. That's Commissioner.
Madam Chair, on the fundraising, again, from experience, I can tell you, when people think something's going to happen without them, it's harder to raise the money. Whenever I did it for the Lake Cronus Trail, or when we did it for the park, it was, you need to commit now, you know, and be there, or else this may not happen. If they get the perception that we're moving forward, I mean, I'd want some ironclad guarantee that you're going to raise the 200,000 for us to do this, because, again, in all fairness, the other initiatives that we have done and will do, and you certainly, it sounds like you've got a lot of skin in the game, but we really need to have that commitment, not, Ben said before the meeting, I think you said, "Hopefully," and I said, "Hopefully" is not going to cut it for me, that you're going to raise the 200,000. We need some kind of a commitment. I can see that we confront it, but we'd want a commitment that it would happen. I shouldn't say "we," I would want a commitment. I won't speak for the rest of the board.
Would a blood oath be appropriate?
Lee?
Would a blood oath be appropriate?
Only from you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
I've been given it twice a day here.
Hey, Janet, is it possible to take down the screen so we can see Commissioner Lenzmeyer? Oh, there you are.
Do we have to?
It is certainly easier to have him participate, that's for sure. Yes, so this is something, the last time, I think you were chair, you had signed, uh, the agreement that was in there, and we have agreed to do some other things since we started working on this. I think, for me, what Commissioner Bertram said, maybe not the blood oath, but you being able to go back and say, "Look, this is kind of a placeholder. They're helping us get to the point that we can do the grant. We have to keep, we have to come up with these funds together." And if there are ways that, that some of us can help you as well, you can let us know that, too.
And Madam Chair, and that, and that was a concern of the, of the Park Commission's, a few of the members were saying, yes, uh, you know, they want the project moved forward, but the obligation of the 200,000 was an obligation they came in with, and that, that they would expect that to be met, so.
And it's, it's good to see a big chunk, like with the Burnix, it being jumped forward. I mean, I, it would be really interesting to see what happens before the end of the month, going back to your concept of the deadline, too. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I just wanted to just highlight that part of the motion is, you know, does include or recommended board action is the, with the understanding that the Cycling Club will continue their funding campaign, um, at this said value, so, of what they presented today.
And Madam Chair, Ben, with all due respect, uh, with the expectation, that's different than the guarantee or whatever. And Randy, I mean, do you have an issue? I, obviously, I know you'll say, you can, we confront the money and everything, but do you have a concern with, okay, so we, the expectation is 200,000, it doesn't happen, basically then we'd have to say, okay, we're going to take 50,000 out of the general fund and make up the difference, or?
Right, yeah. It's a little bit odd to have something like this, but I understand the timing. We would probably look at the park fund, fund balance, so, which I know Ben likes to protect, but this is his deal, so.
Dr. Williams?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, maybe it's in part a question and a, and a suggestion, but Ben, wouldn't we have another decision point for the board? I mean, even if the grant was awarded, they're still going to have to take some action to approve the project moving forward. I mean, I, we wouldn't want to be in a position to refuse a grant. I know that always looks bad, but, but we could do that if, if these parameters weren't met.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners and Mr. Williams, yes, so, the grant contract will come back to board for final signature, um, if we're awarded it, once the environmental paperwork and all that is done. So, yes, it does not look good if we do deny it, but yes, that is always an option, so.
Right.
It certainly is a slippery slope. If we got that far, again, I'd want some assurances now, and I guess if you tell me you're going to raise the 200,000 without doing the blood oath, that would mean...
I, I think we, we are a grassroots organization. I mean, we're a board of five, so I just want that reality out there, too. But, I mean, we are going to keep working. I mean, we are going to keep working until we, we get there, or we get as close as, I mean, we, like he said, we have up to two, two-plus years to get there until we're, we're actually building. Um, and I, I do think it's growing, and I do think that this is a movement with, you know, across the state that, that is becoming popular. So, we're going to keep working on it, yes. I mean, we'll, we'll get as close as we can. That's, I mean, that, that's what I can say.
I'm hearing you say you don't personally have pockets deep enough to make a personal blood oath, that you are going where. And I was thinking about what our newest member on the Parks Board, Mike Mullin, knows lots of people through Rotary. Perhaps we need to get you in to talk to Rotary.
Yeah, and I think we're close, because we, we have had some bigger organizations that are, you know, 10, 10-plus thousand, and I think if we're looking at our beyond 2025 commitments, we're really at about, I think it was 100, 150-ish, um, so we're looking at raising another 50,000 in the next two years. I, I do think that's doable, um, and I, I'm hoping our community can get behind it with, with your support as well.
Madam Chair, um, and I, I look back at, uh, other fund, fundraising projects and cooperative issues we've had, and we have people coming in with promises to, to raise funds. Uh, it seems to me they've always met those. And, uh, to say, "Well, we're going to try," is different than saying, "We will." And so, I guess I would be comfortable in, in moving it forward if it, if the words are, "We will," opposed to, "We're going to try." So, I...
I think the horse is dead, folks.
And that also would then put the pressure on the organization, says, "Yeah, we're, now we're going to try to raise those funds. We, we're not just going to hope they're going to come in."
But I think if community members are hearing, this goes back to your point. I've, I've worked on raising some funds that actually had different deadlines, that somebody, an entity would have said, "Yep, we're willing to front it while you continue to work." And then the way the campaign was, "We have to meet this. We, we have to get this done. We have to meet this." They're essentially, it's essentially like a loan. It's a, it's a bridge, it's a gap thing to get the other funds. And that can be...
The horse is dead.
Do you have a motion, Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Um, no, I was just trying to confirm that, uh, we've, uh, overextended our detailed analysis.
We do, but we will keep talking as this board tends to if we don't move somewhere else with this, so I don't...
I was just going to make a comment, I, I mean, I think the group has probably heard us pretty loud and clear.
Yeah, pretty loudly.
Um, and I guess you've got to have faith in people that they're going to take our comments seriously and make it happen.
I would just want to make, make comment. So, we, we've gone to our, our volunteers, we've gone to, to raise the funds we have, and we, we happen to be sitting here to, to be able to get this to pass. Um, we're asking for the, that match to get, to get the most work done possible. When we raise these funds upfront, and we're talking about trying to obtain the 600,000 with the grant, we're talking about, we've already raised, um, in commitments of, of the $150,000 plus, but the benefit of the park system, and what it does to the community is great, um, and for what it does to enhance the, the quality and the usage of this park. Um, I, I hope you don't forget that, that component of what we're asking is really, if, if it's $50,000 commitment, we didn't raise this another dime, the $50,000 is really to obtain another 750,000. Um, to not forget that, what it does for the greater good for the community. Um, I mean, it's, it would be great if we could do this and have it 100% right now, but to be able to put the grant in, to get the furthest, um, that's where we're asking for your support to bring that.
So, maybe part of what you're hearing is, if we're talking a timing issue, because this is coming up, that's one thing. If it's, we're not sure if we can ever get to that number, you know, then a more direct way to approach this would be, we're looking for X amount of money that the county will be doing. I'm not hearing you say that. So, I think, you know, the expectation really is that you all will be doing that, and again, as individuals, if we can be helping you out in any way. Um, I wish I had deep pockets, I do not, but...
And Madam Chair, I'm glad that you're meeting with the city. I mean, use us if we do do this, uh, to leverage the city of saying, it was the expectation that, you know, when you can leverage funds, saying, "If we, you get this, we can get that," if we do act on this, which I'm leaning, even though this morning on my way down, I'm thinking I'm not going to support this, so, uh, I'm leaning that I will support this with what I'm hearing from you, but leverage that with the city of saying, the county, or at least one commissioner, uh, went, uh, supported it because the expectation was, "We're going to do this together." The best efforts that we've done in the county, in my opinion, have been joint efforts between cities, townships, uh, county, you know, collaborative, private, you know, those are the best, uh, so.
And I think you're speaking for all of us.
I think so. Which is hard for me to do.
We agree as well.
I know. We agree. Okay. All right.
So, if we're looking for a motion, is the motion we're looking for, is that we'll support the project as long as the $200,000 is raised by the group?
With the expectation.
Right, with the expectation that the, that the organization is going to raise the remaining part. But we, you can go ahead and, and submit the application, is what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Are you making, so that, so moved by Commissioner Persky?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Um, seeing that you promptly described the good, robust conversation with a dead horse, uh, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Madam Chair, just discussion clarification.
Okay.
Okay, and so that is that it will be raised by the, uh, by the group?
Right, we're expecting it.
And the county is not obligated then, correct?
Well, it's part of the grant.
It is, part of the grant, we're saying that here's what's been committed, and we are putting this other part. What we are saying without a blood oath is, we're expecting that the group is going to come back with raising the money.
With the understanding, as Mike said, you do get another swing at this.
Exactly.
Right, and we do have the option of denying the exception of the grant, because we haven't, I don't think we've had an opportunity where people have failed their, their obligation, so.
And so, we're not, we're not just ending on our worries. This could be a really great opportunity, too, and don't want to minimize what you all are trying to do.
And I would, Madam Chair, I would take it back to the Park Commission, because I've talked to a couple of members, and there was discussion, but everybody seems a little hurried because of the deadline of 31st. I would just, maybe even after this, just go, dig in a little bit deeper, a little bit more, to find where it's going to be in the maintenance and, like, for both of our purposes.
Right, once the engineer comes in, there'll be some updates along the way. That will be important. I, I was thinking you were going to go back and ask them to help with fundraising, because, you know, they could as individuals. All right, we're going to go...
And, and just for, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, one more whip with the horse.
It's already done.
Okay, I know it is. I'm still going to whip the dead horse. And this would also...
Go ahead and talk, just don't whip the horse.
Okay. This would also then...
The horse is starting to smell.
As far as other groups coming to us, as far as our sincerity and our integrity of projects moving forward.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right.
Madam Chair.
Okay, yes.
I think, you know, is the, I think we should ask the club, I mean, the Minnesota Cycling Club, if, if that's something, you know, maybe before we get too far. I mean, is that something that, the motion, the way it's presented, that you can work with?
I mean, all I could say is, well, well, I mean, our goal is to raise the funds. Um, our goal is to raise the fund, and just since our June, um, meeting, we've already brought another $30,000, um, since beginning of June. Um, the, we, we've been at this trail since 2020.
Jeez.
And we tried to raise the funds. Two years ago, we didn't get close to this enough to even bring it to, to the grant, grant process. This is the closest we've gotten now, um, in this campaign. It's got a lot of wheels behind it. Um, the, I guess, our goal is to get this into the, for the, to get the, the grant application in. If, if we come back here and say we didn't for some reason, I don't know, I'm guessing that it's, we don't have to accept that grant. Um, but at the same time, that, that'll be decision at that point, the board would need to make, or to accept without any matching portion of it and reducing it.
Yeah.
Reducing the funds.
That would be my thought, too. I mean, I, I think we'll get there. I think we will, um, with this timeline. Um, but I just, again, we're a small organization, and if there'd be some wiggle room to, you know, instead of the $800,000 grant, maybe we're going to not do as much or something. I guess that would be something I would want to look into as well. But, um, the motion, in terms of the motion, yes, I'm comfortable with the motion.
And two questions, very quickly, trying not to, the horse is not near me right this second. Um, it was, one, uh, when, when would you anticipate hearing back about whether the, the, we would get the grant?
Madam Chair, so that's typically in December, when the recommendation goes to the legislature, and it's never not been approved by the legislature. So, it's December this year.
Right, so this point, you know, in some ways, you've got between now and the end of the year for people to really have their feet under the fire, because that's when, and that's still going to have to get through, right? It's got to go back to the legislature, which could give a little bit more time. That's a lot better than two or three weeks, right? So, that's, that's a good thing. And then the other question I had had was, how hard are they to work back, work with on scaling back a project a little bit if needed?
We've never done it, so, don't know.
Don't know. That's okay. Well, I, I'm going to be, choose to be optimistic and believe you're going to get there. You've got some really great companies and individuals who have already said yes, who work with, with others that can potentially be helpful. And this is a very, I mean, Quarry Park is unique. I mean, it's unique in the country, and this will certainly add quite a bit. Again, that's my attempt to try to end this on the most positive way. So, we have a motion and a second. I'm pausing, seeing no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lee? Okay, Lee said aye. Oppose, same sign? Okay. It's, it's approved. Thank you. I mean, I hope you're hearing that we're, while we've got some angst, we really do appreciate the work you're doing, and if this buys a bit more time to get there, it's going to be exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And will you please thank the other members as well?
It's a lot of work.
All right. All right, administration, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have two items related to the Jail and Justice Center project in front of you today, the ballot question and the public engagement plan. The first, first item is the, is the public engagement plan, and, uh, the reason the paper copy of the presentation is in front of you is because there was a couple changes from the one that was in the packet. Um, of course, we want to be as transparent and as gauging and educating as we possibly can, uh, as we approach the November referendum on the sales tax. So, in, in, in work with, with our consultants, both our architect and our construction manager, Mr. Cornick and, and Ms. Midas have been putting together, uh, the plan that's before you today. Hopefully, we'll get some feedback from the board, and most importantly, um, get agreement from board members that they're going to be fully engaged in this process, because, uh, you're, you're the voice of the county, and it's, and it's going to be an important few months in front of us here as far as educating, educating the public. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin and Janet to run through the, the plan that we have in place.
Well, good morning, Chair Clark, Commissioners. Uh, like Mike said, I'm Kevin Cornick, I'm the Facilities Director for the county, and, and Janet Midas, the county's, uh, Public Information Officer. And what we really want to go over today, like Mike said, um, the county staff in partnership with our architect and our builder have been working on a, on a broad communication plan, um, really from this point all the way to a ribbon cutting and beyond, so, not just talking referendum or, uh, you know, those kinds of things. It's really, uh, an in-and-end communication plan. Um, so, working with, uh, a team from HDR, which is a consultant of our architect, uh, they have a really deep, um, bench of experience when it comes to referendum planning, um, and just more broad marketing of projects and community engagement. And then Carlos Anderson, our builder, uh, brings a lot of experience on keeping the public informed as projects going. They'll do flyovers, and they'll do walkthroughs, and they keep, you know, almost a live stream of, of the project, if you will. So, uh, what we wanted to focus on today was the more upfront part of that communication plan, getting out in front of the community, uh, and informing them as much as possible on the need and, and, uh, and the vote coming up here in November for the sales tax. And, um, so, what you'll see here, um, on the update, we'll go through, uh, the county's website, that was just recently updated, went live, uh, some internal communication, we say internal, that's county staff. Some internal communication, we say internal, that's county staff. We recognize that some of our best advocates are our own staff. So if we can engage, you know, all 1,000 of them to get out there and, and spread the word, that's, that's fantastic. A healthy program of community information meetings, pretty much across the county in different ways, shapes and forms. And then some more facilities tours coming up here later this fall. So with that, Janet, if you want to talk about.
Yes, as Kevin said, we did just recently launch a website, some project pages specifically focusing on just the justice center. Those pages launched probably a couple of weeks ago or so. Don't know if you had a chance to get out to see them yet, but it is definitely still a work in progress. Currently, we have those pages listed here, the background, which includes the history and why there's a need for a new justice center. Some questions, we're kind of tracking what is the public, what are we hearing from them and what are we seeing online of people, what kind of questions they're asking, where have the cost, which includes not only the cost, but also the sales tax referendum and what that means and how that affects the residents. Engage with the project is kind of the community calendar and what some of the meetings are that we're going to be holding throughout the county, some dates when maybe on the radio, just different things that will affect our residents and when they can expect to get information from us. So as well on that page, it tells us how they can reach out to us if they want to reach out to us with questions, some suggestions. So we have that contact information in there, and of course, voting information. We want to keep that very prominent, at least through election time, so that they know how to get to the polling places and what types of questions will, what the question on there will be the referendum and all that stuff. So, but again, that website will remain up to date continuously, will be constantly adding information, photos, videos, content, continuously, even past referendum until we, you know, open the building, do a tour, whatever, after it's open. So that will be a continuously updated site and even adding gov deliveries. So far, residents want to subscribe to get updates, texts, emails, they can get information automatically sent to them that way. And the QR code, of course, for any printed documents that we include so that they can get to our website. This is kind of just a list of some of the key community events that we have planned and the timeline for some of those events. As you can see, things kind of gets really launched when we go to the Stearns County Fair at the end of the month. We're obviously going to have a big justice center presence at the fair at the end of the month. You're well aware of that. From there, you've been hearing a lot about these community meetings that we want to hold. I do have more information as well coming up in future slides here, but we do plan to hold those, as you'll notice, September 23rd through October. Our timeline for that is that we want to start doing those as soon as open, our absentee voting starts. That way, we can hold these community meetings and at the end of the meeting, we could say, hey, you have a chance now to go out and vote. Go cast your vote, here you have the information, go cast your ballot. So we kind of plan that in line with the opening of absentee balloting. On September 1st, we plan to do a first mailing of our postcard. That postcard will just be information so people are aware of what the referendum is, what they will be voting for. So every Stearns County resident is going to get the postcard, again, just so they have information on the referendum. Timing with that as well, in mid-September, we're going to start holding our first jail tour. Again, then you see the early voting goes, starts September 20th. Our newsletter as well, obviously containing a lot of information on the justice center, the referendum sales tax that will come out mid-September. And then, once all that is underway, in October, we'll do more informational, we'll do another round of postcards, another public jail tour, and we hope to do some op-ed pieces in the newspaper. We need to, even though we're going to be doing some social media, we'll still need to be doing some traditional media and doing some op-ed pieces before we head up to election.
Commissioner, do you?
Just a quick question, Janet.
Sorry about that.
On the postcards, are you going to include the QR code?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, good question. And throughout all of that, we're going to be mixing in, of course, a lot of other activities. We're going to be attending not just the community events that we are scheduling and holding, but attending community events that are, that are already planned in our communities. So we have a list of those and we'll be attending some of those. Doing some of our internal communications, as Kevin mentioned, it'll be important to get our employees to be advocates on behalf of the projects. We want them informed as to what the project is, what it entails, help them understand the sales tax. So we're doing some of that. We'll be having displays up at our county buildings, so if people walk in and out of the building, they'll get the information. We haven't kicked off a real social media campaign. We've had some information, but we're going to officially kick off a social media campaign this week, actually, just mentioning our website. And we mentioned the editorials and some of the other, the pop-up events are the things in the communities that we'll be attending, so. And the speaker bureaus, we've already been doing many of those, Kewanas, the Lions, the downtown councils, some of those types of things. So we're already attending some of that, but that will be ongoing. Again, these are just some of the tactics that we're going to be using, but again, just reemphasizing, we'll have a big social media campaign, not so active with that yet, but that is going to be a whole new campaign. The community information meetings and the postcards kind of went through some of that, the op-ed pieces will be probably asking some of you to get involved with that or other staff. The tours, speaker bureaus, the posters, we're going to be hanging posters up in various key locations as well, so.
Coming up here in July, one of the things that really was kind of born out of our leadership meeting was that our county employees are, are some of our best advocates for these things. So throughout the month of July, we're going to take a, a team of us that have been working on this and really kind of insert ourselves into some of those existing department meetings that, that are already taking place and just try to spread the word really amongst our own staff of, of what the need is, why this is important, the, some information around the sales tax and give them some tools when they're out talking to family and friends and, and really the public. We have a lot of public interaction across all departments, so giving them as many tools as they can to answer questions and ultimately hopefully point people back to the website, which is going to be sort of our catch-all for, for all of this information. So that's going to be a, a significant campaign through the month of July here, so.
So is that partially the goal for everybody, to be both consistent and concise and to have enough information? Because, you know, to date, which one of the things boards brought up, we've had many different voices saying things kind of the way people want to say them, and we need to quickly come to perhaps giving examples that we want to give, but being as consistent and as concise as possible, which can be hard sometimes.
Yeah, it is. And I think consistency in that messaging is, is important and something that we're trying to maybe get down to, you know, some of those real core messages that are consistent and have them be repeatable, I think has definitely been a goal and, so.
And you're exactly right in that. It's one of the reasons we want to obviously present to these internal staff, but as well, we're going to be having materials available that staff can use, you can use, whether it's talking points, little palm sheets that people can just carry with them, and so the information is hopefully right there and, again, sharing the same information. This is just an example, we were talking about those pop-up events. This is not the list necessarily that we're going to be attending, but it's just an example of those types of pop-up events where we can just attend and have a booth there to be available to answer questions, meet with residents, push out some of that information, and hopefully just hit events throughout the county. We have a full list.
Except for it's missing kind of a big one, summertime by George.
It is probably on there, probably just isn't showing on this list.
I've actually looked through it several times. It's like, that was kind of a big miss.
It was on, I know it's on my list.
I know it's on your list. I know it's on yours.
So yes, but you're exactly right. That is on our list and we plan to attend that.
Yeah, for some examples.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of a really big one.
It was almost a, you know, kind of a realization as we started just in our little group, naming off all the events that take, you know, just in the month of July. I mean, I'm guessing we probably don't even have half of them, but it's amazing how much takes place in, in our county in any given month, especially in the summertime.
Yes. And here's just a closer look at those community meetings that we were talking about. So these are the meetings that we would set up and hold specifically to talk to residents about the justice center. And what you'll see here, you'll see that map, and our goal was, is to hold obviously the, the minimal number of meetings we could while still being very accessible to our residents. So the map shows, the green is five miles within that area and the blue is 10. We were trying to be within 10 miles of every resident so it would be convenient for every resident to attend a meeting. And we kind of hit that with like reaching 99% of our residents within a 10-mile radius. And with this, we have 17 meetings proposed, and that is with the three in the metro area and then the others throughout the county. So you can see the list of the meeting locations on here.
So depending upon what you, sorry, you mean by metro area, another one might have to get added because I hate to say it, there are people who will not travel four or five miles to go to a different community, they just won't. And given how much population is over there, it's going to be important to have more than one opportunity or that they perceive there's more than one opportunity for them to go in their, their neighborhood, as it were.
And yes, and this, we can add, and we figured that this was just kind of a highlight so we can absolutely add meetings.
Otherwise, I thought it was good. It's really, it looks like it's covered well throughout the county, which is really a good thing.
Yep, and we had talked about that, we probably wouldn't need more meetings in the metro area. So, yep, you're absolutely correct. And so, yes, developing those, that presentation as well at this time.
So you received a packet here that have been took, taking a look at when the most opportune time to have these meetings takes place. Our initial volley, we looked at August, September, and really borrowing on some of the advice of our consultants, trying to borrow somebody's August evening has not proven very effective for them. And they also find out that if you're ahead of, ahead of voting, that sometimes memories are a little bit shorter. So their recommendation was push this into September, October, where people can really take action, you know, they can come to a meeting and, and really immediately take action with absentee balloting. So we're proposing a little bit of a different schedule that pushes this into September and October. So our hope is that we can bring, you know, two or three, let's call it, project experts to each of these meetings. This is one area where we're hoping we can get a lot of support and a lot of time out of the county board to attend where possible. And we're even going to reach out to some of the local leadership, think city council members, township leaders, those kinds of things, and see their interest in, in helping this as being a township that, that exists within the county. So in some of the meetings we've had, it felt like we've had pretty healthy support from that group as well, so we're looking to take advantage of that, so.
So to clarify, it's not solely township folks that you'll be reaching out to.
City leaders, township folks. Yeah, and anybody else at the county board might feel could be a, a strong advocate to the project, let's go for it, so. Coming up in October, again, some of the warmer months, the Mayes and, and August, we, when we did tours last year, to say we had poor attendance by comparison would be an understatement. So we're looking to shift those more into that September, October timeline to get, give people an opportunity to see the facilities that we have and really help us explain where the pinch points are in that system. So likewise, we want to take a bit of a media tour around these facilities, too, and give, give them an opportunity to maybe take some pictures where pictures aren't usually taken and, and help us get that word out there from, from their standpoint as well, so.
Quick question with that, do you have a way, or are you contemplating in a way to do some type of a virtual tour that people can see? I mean, there's some people where it's kind of a drive to come in. And I know that that can be hard, but I also just was seeing incredible pictures taken of my great-grandparents' home that was very small, and it's amazing how, what angles they could do. So if there's some way to do, help capture some of that, it could be, include that in our website, it could be very useful, and then we could do links to it.
That is a great idea. And we actually had talked about doing a video and photo type of gallery showing exactly those things, so.
Yeah, just something quick that people can at least look at, you know, when they're available.
Okay, and as you had mentioned, Earl, consistent and repeatable core messaging is important. We know that to keep our residents on board, we need consistent messaging, and we are going to have the website kind of serve as our basis for that. If people don't know the answer or if they want more information, we're going to always try to send them to the website. That'll be our base point. And I had mentioned as well, the palm cards before. Again, that's just going to be a little thing you can keep in your pocket and your wallet. We'll just have some basic talking points on it, so you can always have it on you. And again, anyone with questions can go to the webpage or you can also email. We set up a specific email just for this justice center project, and that is the email right there, forjusticecenter@stearnscountyamend.gov. So you can start giving that out if they want, people want to reach us with suggestions, if they have questions, that's where we want to refer them, so. Is that it?
Yeah, with that, yeah, our, our goal for this was really to be informational and then to, to receive whatever feedback the board might have, or ideas, or things that, that you see from your, your perspective that we can tap into, so.
Commissioner Bertram.
Madam Chair, I held my tongue the whole time through, so rather than asking three questions every so often, if you don't mind, and.
We'll take a couple at a time.
There you go. I'll do three and then I'll stop. How's that? And then I hope just somebody humor me and pretend you're writing them down, so I'm not just talking into the air. The engagement from the board that Mike mentioned, obviously, it's critical that, in my opinion, it's not just the board, it's the other elected officials in the county, Randy and the sheriff and Janelle. I think that's important. Department heads, we need all hands on deck, in my opinion, so. And my biggest concern is that it's one message, that it's not, because, you know, prior to this, we've heard different messaging that will support it if, or, you know, that kind of stuff. It's got to be one message. Again, if we're hearing different things from different people, it's going to be confusing. And I don't know who's going to manage that, but someone needs to. The discussion point, the one thing I'm hearing most recently now is people saying, well, are we, are we going to be able to staff it? Because they're well aware that prisoners are being shipped out because there's no staff. It's not just a facilities thing. So somehow, I think we need to just address the fact that we're aware of that, we believe a new facility is going to help bring in employees or whatever that facts are, but we don't, I've heard a little bit from people that surprised me, if we build it, will we be able to facilitate it? Was that three or do I have one more? One more? Oh, the media person, I think, again, for the rural areas, try to bring in the Star Post, Painsel Press, Cold Spring Record, those editors, you can get them in and do the thing. I love the virtual tour thing, but again, one-on-one, a front page article in the Star Post, Painsel Press, Cold Spring Record, in those rural areas is going to be powerful, so try to tap into that. I'll quit, or I'll pause.
You'll pause, because.
I won't quit.
Because, no, those are good. You've got some similar ones, okay. Who else would like questions or comments? As you're pondering that, I want to reinforce one of the things you said, I know I brought it up earlier, but the consistent and concise and us all agreeing, because that's the thing about elected officials, right? That includes you, Randy, includes you, Sheriff, includes a county attorney, is sometimes we, because we have our own election certificates, say, well, then we can go do where we want. If somebody's going to be going out, we're agreeing to be doing this. And we, we need to make it as consistent and have those amplifiers because otherwise people are just going to go down, you know, a so-called rabbit hole like you can online. Lee, did you have any questions or comments about this public, what they're putting together in terms of the public campaign?
No, it's a, I looked at that list of possible contacts and that was impressive. And plus, at the end of talking about that list of contacts, I think it was Janet that made the point that even that wasn't all-inclusive. So we've got a lot of possibilities on ways to make our case on this, and I, I laud the approach you folks are suggesting, and we'll go from there.
Commissioner Persky, Commissioner Notch, do you have anything right now? Otherwise, we, no, okay. Well, and one other thing before you go, I thought it was good that you were trying to limit both from people's realistic time commitments, how many would be going out, but also, once you get into five, six, seven, eight voices, it becomes very difficult for anybody to really get it out. That doesn't mean that we won't all have other opportunities. I don't see Whitney Senior Center on your list, like about the other senior centers, too. We've got senior centers throughout the communities. Again, no, it's not exhaustive, but that, that's the kind of place that you can do things more often, too, if you decide you want to. So think about, I appreciate you not adding too many, and since there'll be other places people are going to be going communicating, we're going to have kind of our, our message, our consistent message to go do that with as well, correct? Okay. Commissioner Bertram, I'm quite sure that you've got some of mine, so I'll let you keep.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you, what are, at these events, what do you, what's the plan of doing it, like if you go to Fire Fest? I mean, what's the plan, like a banner or?
Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Bertram, I guess it's really going to depend, you know, on the event. Fire Fest is a good example where, you know, we're certainly not going to, you know, grab the podium and do a, do a 10-minute spiel on stage, although it'll probably be pretty effective, but, so something like that. I think at a minimum, we'd like to get the message out there and, you know, as staff, you know, can attend, I think we should, understanding that, you know, we probably can't park somebody or two people at every event going on in Stearns County.
So maybe as a follow-up, does that mean tabling more at places like that?
Yeah, sometimes it might be a little more passive.
Because you're asking partially about the presence, right?
Right. You could get one of the performers to sing it, maybe. Let's work on that.
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to help. Not me, I can tell you that. Maybe Willie Nelson, huh?
You've got to prioritize some of these events. I mean, if you'd asked me in my district, obviously, in each of our districts, we know better what the events are, I would tell you which ones would be more conducive to it than others. I mean, some, some of these events, the last thing that somebody that's at the event is going to want to even pay attention to is what you're doing.
Well, and I think.
Unless you're right beside the beer. Unless you're right beside the beer garden, maybe they might pay some attention.
Yeah.
You're giving out beer.
I know where to get attention in St. Anna Church Picnic if I need to. No, and honestly, Commissioner Bertram, that's excellent feedback for us, because you commissioners know your district better than any of us, and which events that you've had success in, feed that back to us. You know, we're, like I said, this was us sitting in a conference room throwing out events, and some might have an impact, some maybe not so much. So we will certainly take that feedback. You want to email me, or?
Right. And so it sounds like we should be contacting you and letting you know--
Yeah, absolutely.
And we should let them know.
We should let you all know, and as you were kind of working that through, having a good one-pager, double-sided if needed, that we can leave in places. Again, I use Whitney Senior Center as an example, they always have a place this time of year that you can be, it's often about other kinds of, like candidates, but people stop by and pick up things. So if there's something that has that QR code, whether it's those cards or something else, what can we go help bring out there? Not just social media, but--
Right. And we're working on a lot of those documents right now as well, little things that we can leave behind at different places, so.
And Madam Chair, I have the theme, if I were you, are you aware of, you know, kind of a thing, you know, like if you've got a booth or whatever, are you aware of the sales tax, or the Justice Center jail, whatever? I think that kind of approach, because it'll perk people, a lot of the parades are over with yet, but a big, a lot of big ones are going through. You go through with the vehicle with, are you aware with the code on it, and just saying, start paying attention, or something. There's still some big parades left yet, and again, you've got to cap the audience that you don't, it won't take a lot of time, but it's a presence. The staff, the council meetings, you know, most of them are videoed, and so if, and I would encourage, I know you've made joint, like two, three people kind of presentations, I mean, you're going to need a lot of staff. I would just say you get one staff person at some of these things. Again, you've got a council meeting that's aired, a lot of people watch council meetings, I can't believe how many people watch this meeting. And so those kinds of things, townships and council meetings. And what I would, what I would suggest is that when you meet with staff and you meet with these community people, ask them, what are you hearing? Because again, you're talking to them, but take the time to say, what are you hearing? Because then you're going to open the door up to people saying, well, I heard this. And it's going to be something that's probably not going to be positive, that you can either correct or validate and say, you're right, you know, whatever. And then how are we going to handle this as far as staff time goes? I mean, are we going to be coordinating, I mean, are we going to be paying like overtime like crazy, or are you going to be, you know, doing schedules where they're not working Mondays, or if they're doing something? But again, I guess, we don't have to get in detail with that, but this obviously is going to take a lot of, I assume someone's managing that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bertram, most, almost everybody that will be involved in this, most will be salaried people and part of their duties for the next few months.
And I'm hearing, though, some recognition that that means hopefully somebody isn't, like, lighting the candle at both ends. Why don't you do one more, then? It looks like--
And then the community meetings, just for whatever it's worth, in my district, St. Augusta is the biggest city in the, in my district. I think that'd be better than Clearwater personally, and Clearwater's in Wright County. So I mean, do one in St. Augusta, you're doing one in Kimball, that reaches that Fairhaven, Linden Township people, but I think it'd be more appropriate, in my opinion, in St. Augusta than it would be in Clearwater. I know it's right on the edge, but just give that a thought. And then Cold Spring and Richmond, Richmond's on here, Cold Spring's not, Rockville's not. Again, Rich, Cold Spring's the second biggest city, and they've got an active cable, they got a very active cable in Rockville, Cold Spring, Richmond, that Recore, Joe takes care of that, does a really good job. Tap into that, that's not directly city-related, so, but, and Steve and I do columns, I've been talking about it in my columns, my video columns and my written columns, and we'll be doing that.
And are you okay with, I think your points too, it sounds like you were trying to figure out where are places that people wouldn't have to travel far. You might also want to consider, I joke around with Jody all the time, there's people from Sartell who aren't going to come to part of St. Cloud, and there's absolutely people in my district who will never go to Sartell for a meeting. It's not that they don't care, it's, I'm not going, I'm not, I'm not going there. So as Commissioner Bertram was just saying, talk with us too about where maybe some of those places are that we can, can help you with, or that we can help extend.
One last point, and then I'm done, is the mail-in ballots is really something unique, or at least was for me. You started talking to people very early, and they said, well, we already voted. It's, you know, and so be aware of that when you set your calendar. It's a, it was really odd for me to adapt to that, because there's some areas that are fully, townships that are fully mail-in ballot, and by the time when people are paying attention to normally vote in a regular election, those people are saying, oh, we already voted.
I was aware of that, and I actually worked with the elections office on that, knowing and asking that, how quickly that turnaround was. That's why we're like targeting, like, the newsletter to be out September 15th, because they will turn their ballots around really, really quickly. So you're exactly right. We did time some of that specifically for that mail-in ballot, expecting them to come in immediately.
Well, and starting the 23rd as opposed to the 15th or the 18th, also, I mean, I totally agree with the whole thing about August, people aren't paying attention, but waiting until people are actually voting, recognizing that there's a number of people who don't do it, who don't come in quickly, but yeah, with the mail-ins, they could have made some decisions.
And hopefully then they're getting information, yeah, through the newsletter or through others, the postcards, and yeah.
Maybe, maybe not. Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I think a very positive thing that can come out of this whole process, though, is also just an open communication. It's going to be an opportunity for us to reach out to the public in a number of ways, in that there will be those folks that are coming to talk about the Justice Centers, but they're going to maybe also talk about other issues, environmental roads, human services, or other needs that they have. But likewise, the other way, when people come in and have questions about a culvert in their area, or a shoreline situation that they have, it gives us an opportunity then also, okay, you know, and you do know about the Justice Center and where we hope to be going with that. So I think this, there can be an overall awareness about community services and what we do, and how we can help each other, so, yeah.
Okay. So hopefully this is some good feedback--
Absolutely.
--right now, people should think and come back particularly, it sounds like if there's places or locations or groups, and--
Yeah, Commissioner Clark, like we had said, if there's, you know, this isn't the only opportunity, we're looking at this document as kind of a living, breathing thing that we can add to or subtract, and if there's, you know, certain events that come up, I don't, a month from now, let us know, and we'll try to do our best. But like I said, you know, those community meetings in particular, you know, we're going to try to get those, at least a date and a venue, so people can start, you know, us and you can start planning your schedules a little bit. But no, please send any feedback you have our way.
Okay. You get the last one.
Okay, I was just going to suggest that maybe we have a five or 10-minute blip at our next county board meetings, you know, just kind of updating us how events turned out, what, you know, some reactions.
Yeah.
You know, just as time goes on, we give feedback in every couple of weeks, kind of on what you're seeing and hearing.
Yeah, okay, that's a good idea.
If we can lend insight in between there, then.
We might even want a short, short little, the video or something else to play at our meetings, or before them, or after them. Well, thank you, really appreciate it. Please thank the rest of the team as well for this. We're obviously all wanting to be engaged, and the more you can give us to work with, the more helpful we can be.
Okay, sounds good, yes.
And we will give you our two cents, or 25 cents.
Count on that.
That sounds good.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Schrifels, we're going to move on to the question.
I think we're going to get them up on the screen here.
Yep, sorry.
So I'm just going to make a few comments before I turn it over to you, back to you, Tarrell. So one of the things is, you had in your pack, and we'll see here, is the authorization, just reminder of what the authorization was, and we should keep the question close to that. And then we had the three questions, and then we developed a fourth one also, and the highlighted areas are the changes from the first one, the first question, and you've seen the first two. So the third question is the new one, talking about the location, and then the fourth one that was put on your table is really just putting the, what we're using the money for, the finance construction of the Justice Center facility more towards the top, which I think is probably a positive change, so.
And members, just so you know, what I had noticed in going through the three questions is one of them had done that someplace up near the top where people could see, this will be a task, and here's what it's going to go for, and then what the terms of the time. So after, the more I thought about that and the way you construct questions, the less people have to read before they know what it is they're voting on, I would argue is the best. So I would encourage whatever version of this you want to do, that we do make sure we've moved up the, what it's for.
That's all I had.
Okay. Sarah, did you have anything else?
Um, not necessarily. Up on the screen right here is the three questions that we had provided ahead of time. And then the fourth one that I, that you have in front of you, and that I have printed on the back there, is, is the same as number two virtually, I just kind of switched the order, as, as the chair mentioned.
Another thing is, for me, after talking with Randy and noodling on it for a while, I, unless we're going to make this a lot longer, I think not putting in the information that it's not going to be downtown anymore is, it probably is cleaner just not to have that. We will, we could put that in all of our information that we're helping people see, because otherwise, you probably have to put that it's still going to be in the city of St. Cloud. I mean, it just keeps getting longer. And we will be letting, speaking as somebody who's been obviously dealing with the downtown piece quite a bit, I'm not sure that it's adding anything. And again, without it saying, it will still be in St. Cloud, it probably actually gets us in some other challenges. So something to consider.
Madam Chair--
Commissioner Persky.
Number two, I believe, is the only one that I see that puts the full amount of the project. And I know that's a bit of concern, because the sticker shock that some people might see with that, but I don't want to omit having that amount as, as an effort not to get it passed, because I think, I think there's, there's a relative amount of transparency by having that amount out there. It would be the same thing as having somebody buying a car, you know, here's the car, you know, here are the plans, here are your payments, but them not knowing what they're actually paying for the car. I, to me, I guess the amount's important, I don't know how the other board members feel about that.
Madam Chair, we had that discussion at the last meeting, and, you know, I hesitated only because, and I had to explain this to some people, I only hesitated putting the dollar amount in because I didn't want that to be an expectation. When we have these meetings, and there are 16 people in a room, and they hear 325 million, that's, they think it's an open checkbook. And so I am convinced, I've talked to a lot of people and asked them, and they said that they think that we should put the dollar amount in. But again, the key words are before that, and it's in the language, I like number two, up to 325,000. So every time I say 325,000, I'm going to be saying, up to. This isn't a free-for-all, this is not, as I've said, free money, and if we don't spend 325 million, it's not going to, you know, we're not dishonoring our position. So I think we should say the dollar amount, and again, the key words there are up to. I like number four, so the number two I like, the two things I like, and now number four, what we just got this morning, is solely to finance construction.
Yeah, well, I think she's trying, there it is.
Solely to finance construction and upgrades. And again, how you would word that, add that in there, but I like that, because again, it's being more transparent, because we are, it's strictly for the finance, construction, and upgrades. It's not staff, it's not these other outside issues at all. So we're specifically saying up to a dollar amount, and we're specifically saying for what. And I think that's being very transparent, and I think that's important. So I like number two with the solely finance and the upgrade addition, however you want to tweak that.
And that is in there, they do have--
And number two?
Yep, number two has it in there.
I think they don't have those wordings.
And number two, they do.
I think they should just add solely and upgrades into number two.
It's in there, on the chart we got, it says the sales tax would be used solely to finance construction upgrades and financing costs. So it's in there, if you look at the comparison one, it's highlighted in number two, see right there?
Oh, okay, I was looking at the one we got--
Number four really was more of the, if the board would decide not to put the up to in there, that we would still move up front, like number two does, what it's for. I like number two, I've liked number two since the beginning with the up to, mostly because we're going to be putting it out there anyways, and it also, it's both on the up to, we're going to try to keep it under, but it also has a finite amount in there. It's reminding everybody what we've already voted on, which is, we're not going above that number. We're not going into levies, we're not doing that, this is what it will be.
And I think you could add on number four, you could put the up to 325 million right before where it says the sales tax up to--
I believe it would be the same as number two, then.
It would be kind of the same.
Yeah, it's just a little bit changing of the--
Oh, okay.
Where you would put it, maybe, so that you still are keeping your question, Shell Stearns County be authorized to impose it for the law enforcement center, question mark. The sales tax of up to 325 million would be used solely for, so that can still keep your question as your question, and then as your concern was about having what they're voting for first.
It, number two does that?
I would put it in here, but I only have read only--
No, literally, number two does that. If you look at it, it says finance up to 325 million and the construction of a justice facility consisting of, and then it says the sales tax would be used solely. That, that actually gets to what I was concerned about, was just, the people know this tax is going to go to pay for, you know, our plan.
I think what Sarah was saying is, on number two, you would move the amount, up to amount, to the third sentence, where it says the sales--
Got it, sorry, I wasn't tracking that part.
Yeah, so I would just take this out, and then I would put--
I'd be comfortable with that.
The sales tax, yeah.
But either, however you want to do it, this is--
But I wouldn't put it there, because then it says the sales tax up to 325,000, the sales tax is paying for it, it's not, that 325 should go beyond, would be used solely to finance construction up to 325,000.
Yes.
Not after the sales, I mean, then it says the sales tax is 325 million.
Okay.
But the sales tax is making the payments.
True, that's a true statement, yep.
And just to be clear, Madam Chair, so when we say up to 325,000, so then--
We wish.
Yeah.
You said thousand, we wish.
Million, I'm sorry. So up to 325 million, and then it says, or when it's, until the project is paid for. So if we come up with 308,000, and the sales tax, we generate more sales tax than what we anticipated, one with a lower dollar amount, two with a more aggressive tax collection, potentially it could be 25 years.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Right, people spending more money.
If the cost comes down, or the collections go up, either way can reduce the time.
And interest rates on the bonds and everything else, if they're less than what we anticipated, or whatever, that will all potentially, worst-case scenario, it would be 325 million, 30 years.
Yeah, it can't go past 30 years.
Right, and it can't go over the dollar amount.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like two, I think it sounds like we all like two.
Our members, Lee, I can't see, are you comfortable with number two as it's on the screen?
Well, I guess the point that I would offer is, we're assuming that there's a small army of folks out there that are as wonky about this stuff as we are. I don't know how to cover the topic more succinctly in a referendum question. My, I guess my observation is, from experience, is that these tend to be more detailed than the effort would merit, but I don't know how to fix that. I mean, you're going to be, get criticized either way. Hey, you never told us about that, or, hey, that's, I didn't understand that, all that stuff. So I don't know that there is a right way, all we can do is our best efforts and go from there, but yeah, not everybody is as into the details as we are.
That is very true, and I think that's why Randy and Sarah and the crew are working hard to make this as concise as possible. And I have to say, that's why I thought it was important that whichever we do, that we're making sure that people don't have to read very far that, before they-- we're making sure that people don't have to read very far that, before they find out, see what it is they're going to pay for with the sales tax. Commissioner Persky.
Yeah, and Lee, though, to the point of administration, all these little words can make a difference, though. Shall, we, must, can, or whatever the parameters are. So we've got to make sure it is correct. Sarah, if you could, could you read this out loud for the public that might be listening? Could you read the question that we have?
The number.
Number two.
Shall Sterns County be authorized to impose a sales and use tax of three eighths of 1% to finance up to 325 million in construction of a Justice Center facility consisting of law enforcement, judicial center, and jail? The sales tax would be used solely to finance construction, upgrades, and financing costs for the Justice Center, and remain in effect for 30 years, or until the project is paid for, whichever comes first. These services and facilities are mandated by the state of Minnesota to be provided by counties.
Looking at you, Randy, are you comfortable with number two?
I'm comfortable with it. You know, the only question on number two was some discussion, did you want to move the "up to" 325 million? But if you're comfortable where it is, that's fine.
Members, are you comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay. I am as well. So we're looking for a motion to move adoption of number two as before us, as the question that will go before our voters and our taxpayers.
Madam Chair, I'll move it. I'll lead this movement. I'll second it with a question.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion, Commissioner Lunsmaier, a second, Commissioner Nodch. Questions, comments, Commissioner Nodch?
And this might go back to the previous discussion with Kevin, and I think we need to also express how this came about, that the counties have to provide the facilities, but we don't employ the court people, correct? Because, you know, we're stating that, you know, this is mandated, but I think in addition to that, we should also state, the trade-off was, you know, we have to provide the facilities, but we don't have to provide the employees. Is that kind of correct?
In the courts, yes. That's correct, in the courts.
Mr. Schreifels.
Just looking at this, so number one, that statement, what mandated, is separated. Would you like that, and number two, to be separated, or just all combined the way it is? I know it's a minor point, but.
A space might help.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I had actually even wondered, to Steve's point, I was thinking about that with the courts. I mean, we do need to provide the appropriate facilities. Do we do services and/or facility? I mean, the problem is, we need to do the facilities. Maybe it's, maybe we don't even need services. These facilities are mandated. I mean, these, I don't know, maybe that takes away from what else we're trying to say. I mean, we need, our taxpayers have to pay for these buildings. I mean, that's what the crux of it is. It doesn't mean, because we also are paying for the services with levy, we're not paying for the services with construction money.
Good point. It is a true statement, right? Just the way it is, yeah.
Madam Chair, I like the separation, though.
Yeah, I do, too.
Because what happens is, they then have the question, and they process that paragraph, and then they go on, then you go on and start the next paragraph, and so it allows you to, to know what the question was, and it's, oh, by the way, this is mandated.
I like that, too. If anybody doesn't have a problem with that, let's, we just have adopted that, and I don't.
If the motion or the second are fine, I guess.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Lee, are you good with that?
Any other suggestions that anybody would make besides me? Confuses the issue. Look.
All right. I'm going to take that as you're fine with it, and then you'd like us to vote.
There's no perfect way.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move to our vote on adopting number two, with the stays before the, space before the mandated facilities and services. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lee?
Aye, 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 aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, we've adopted question number two as modified. We have a question. And somebody really wants to get ahold of Commissioner Persky.
You do.
This is where I do the reminder at the end of the meeting that we were supposed to turn off our cell phones. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, both of you. Thank all of you who had worked on this. Was there anything else that you had? I didn't see anything, obviously, on here. Okay, so we're going to move to issues. Randy or Mike, do either of you have anything you want? Randy?
Just on the public access forum, the question or the discussion on the absentee ballot board, so what the question that the attorney's office got was on the wording of the resolution that the board passed. So that resolution is used by pretty much all counties. It's a kind of a standard resolution, it's been used for years. But I think the county attorney is looking at, working with that group to have a slight revision in that wording, so you may see that come back, probably post-primary, as they work through this. But just to be sure that, we do use temps and staff to staff the absentee balloting board, and they do have to declare a party designation, and so we do have balance, so.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Okay, Steve, do you have any items?
No, not really.
Okay. Commissioner Persky, do you have any?
Just a couple of broad things. You know, I'm looking forward, you know, to the fair coming up, the end of the month, and that would be an awesome time for us to, you know, get input from folks from throughout the county, and again, looking at the Justice Center, that we should have a good presence there. I've had a couple of concerns, people calling me, human services, two people had called me about the phone service, and not maybe being able to get through. And I don't know if we've got some wrong numbers that have been posted in the past, and they copy those numbers that, so they're not getting response, so I don't know what that is.
Commissioner Williams?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, if those concerns or complaints were from weeks ago, it could be before we had the phone system fixed.
Okay.
So the timing of that would make a difference when you're receiving those, but I'm happy to take a further look at it.
Okay, okay, yeah, because we want to make sure we're meeting those needs. And then also, I had a concern, somebody called about, Randy, about voter intimidation. They were worried about fearing being, I don't know, chastised or discouraged at the polls. And I'm not quite sure, but maybe I'll get more information about that, but they wanted, they felt that it was maybe not as welcoming as it could be.
Yeah, if I could get more information, I'd appreciate that.
And refer somebody to either Laura Ladenbach or to Randy, too, if there's questions or concerns. Commissioner Bertram?
Madam Chair, love to see a little bit more about the fair, Mike, when we get a chance, and more specific schedules or something. And then the budget, how soon are we going to see the preliminary stuff on the budget?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay, thank you.
Good. Commissioner Lunsmaier?
I don't have anything, and I hope you all had a happy Fourth.
Yeah. And I was thinking the same thing, hope people had a good Fourth. It sounds like from the sheriff's office, that it was pretty quiet, which means people got to have some fun while they were, were safe. We weren't seeing a lot of issues, and the weather cooperated a bit better. So hope people continue to enjoy their summer, and with that, we are adjourned.